I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our meeting is a little bit of a unique sequence tonight, so we'll start with the remote electronic attendance.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of First Ward Alderman Scott Williams, Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, and Alderman at Large Sonia Berg at the Committee of the Hall and City Council meetings of August 4th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Sorry, grabbed my gun. Alderman Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker? I'm sorry, Alderman Schoonmaker?
He may not be in.
Maybe he isn't here yet?
Yeah, maybe not. I don't see him.
Okay. Seven ayes, no nays? That motion carries. We'll now move into the agenda, and the first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the council this evening? Please approach the podium, and all you need to do is say your name. You don't have to give us your address.
Okay. Oh, I think this is where Cecilia O'Brien brought my husband, Pat O'Brien, my sister, Melita Towncliff, with me. I just want a moment of your time, Mayor Akri and council. Hope you don't mind, I can't talk this on. I'm here tonight for an important reason. I'm here to speak on behalf of my family, to give well-deserved recognition and a huge thank you to Sergeant Chris Pickens, who happens to be here tonight, I think with perhaps his boss. We all face challenges every day, and no one really knows how hard things are for other human beings in the world. Life is not easy. Lately, with COVID and constant bad press on that every day, all day long, the police who are there for the community are more important to us now than ever before. My family called the Moline Police desperate to help a family member drowning in multiple issues, not for months but for years. We were lucky enough to be patched into Sergeant Pickens' line. Did he have time to listen to me? Did he have time for this? Perhaps he answered both questions was no, but he gave his time, and he gave it to understand what was going on. Sergeant Pickens is an angel in a blue uniform. He understood the complexities of people struggling with demons like serious mental illness. I do not have to convince Sergeant Pickens that we face an organic illness. He had the instinct to feel it and the compassion to talk with me and my family member with a goal for a good resolution. Is everything rosy today for my family member? No, but we have hope. We have hope that somehow the system can improve for us and everyone who faces the uphill battle of serious mental illness. Why do I talk openly about this? Because I have a passion to educate people, and there's no difference between conditions such as cancer, heart disease, or mental illness. All these issues begin and remain organic. When the brain, one of the most complex organs created on Earth, is affected, the result is hard to grasp and hard to understand. With police on the Moline force like Sergeant Pickens, I have the confidence that we are all in great hands. To those in this room, and to Pickens, his superiors and colleagues, watch and learn. This is the example of what good community police looks like, and we need much more of it in Moline and in our entire nation. From the bottom of my heart and with extreme gratefulness, take a small token of appreciation from our family for what you do every day and for what you did to help us, Sergeant Pickens. I have a certificate signed by me on behalf of the family, certificate of appreciation for Sergeant Chris Pickens. If you want to come forward, we'll give it to you. Kind of next to me.
Actually, we've got to protect him.
Moline, we can come up here, too.
I'm the camera.
Yes. We all are smiling.
They're all smiling.
Yes, yes. And we also have a box of chocolates, because he doesn't like black marinos.
That's wonderful.
So this is very young everybody at the police station. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, O'Briens.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
You got to show us.
Is there any other public comment?
Hearing none.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Alderman Schoonmaker has joined the meeting.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation. It's just a brief presentation. We've invited Dr. Rachel Savage, the Moline Co Valley Superintendent of Schools, to live with us this evening, to talk about our joint digital equity project, and give us an update on what's happening there. So, Rachel, we're gonna, I think Kevin ended up being big. Can we get Rachel big on the screen?
Oh, that's quite all right.
I want to close up, Rachel. There she is. And she's still up. Hello.
Hopefully, you can, hopefully you can hear me okay. Is this okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, boy, I can see myself. You guys weren't kidding either, were you? Oh, boy. Anyway, I won't take too much of your time. I just wanted to have just a few minutes to express gratitude and just to give a brief update. So, thank you for having me, Mayor Akri, members of the council, and guests there in the room. We are in very challenging times, and we are working really, really diligently to provide just the best service that we can to our families, given the rules that we are operating under during this health crisis and this pandemic. So, as we try to do the most that is allowable to us, we know that it's not enough, and we know that there are families facing burdens and challenges far beyond what we can serve at this time, and that's heartbreaking. But my, my goal tonight is to say thank you to members of the council and the mayor for serving as partners and for helping us in our efforts. And the digital equity partnership is, quite frankly, one of the coolest things that I've seen or had the opportunity to be a part of. I mean, literally putting money where our mouths are to get the tools that our kids and our families need to have some opportunity for success during these difficult times. It's just really fantastic. We've identified currently 300 families that do not have the connectivity needed, not only for remote learning, when we are not able to attend fully in school, but also for other uses that help a family be successful. And when parents are having the tools that they need to provide for their family, the kids, the kids are more successful. They are able to be better prepared to learn and to be able to move forward and grow that we know all kids can do. So, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for this partnership and for allowing us the ability to further provide connectivity. You know, we have a blessed community, and we have many, many folks that have the tools and resources that they need to be successful, but that's not every single family. And I think one of the true tests of a quality community is how they serve their most vulnerable and how they step up to assist the families that are most in need. And I believe that's what this digital partnership does. So, thank you for extending some of your dollars to help our families, which are also your families, become connected. I always say, when the, when the community is successful, the schools are, and when the schools are, the community is. So, this really benefits everybody in our community, and I can't thank you enough. In addition, just if I may, the additional partnerships that we have with the Moline Police Department are, in my opinion, top-notch, from the Handle with Care program, with the fantastic relationship that we have with our liaison officers and the incredible service that they do every day in our schools. All of these things are highly beneficial to our operations, which benefit our students and our families. We've got some collaborative safety training coming up, and we've also been invited to be a part of the Mobile Neighborhood Support Unit, which is also really, really proactive and, I think, outside-of-the-box solution. So, I do want to say thank you and to let you know how much we appreciate these partnerships, and all the way down from the, just the meetings that we have to stay connected with one another and to, to learn and benefit from each other's organizations. So, that's really the first part. And the second part is, I guess, just to give a brief update. You know, we have a lot of rules that we are operating under in terms of being able to open our schools. While I would love to have our doors open every single day for every child, it is currently impossible in, in, in our environment. With the rules of keeping our numbers down, you know, right now, we are just being able to offer a blended learning experience for our families or a full remote learning experience for our families. So, for the most part, kids are able to come to school two days a week and be remote three days a week. And then we do have some families, for a variety of different reasons, that are in the process of choosing full-time remote. But this digital equity partnership really allows for fewer interruptions in learning and our ability to keep kids moving forward. You know, kids only have one chance to be in third grade or one chance to be 10. And so, making sure that we can seamlessly navigate these times for kids is so important. And so, I, I don't want to take too much of your time, certainly able to answer any questions, but genuinely thank you, and I really find this partnership unprecedented and something I've not had the benefit to have in previous experiences. So, with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Savage. And I want you to know how much we appreciate the partnership that we have with you as well. We find you to be very open to trying new things and talking about different things, and I hope that this is just the beginning, because who knows what's in our future that we can accomplish together. Is there anyone else on the council that'd like to have a question for Dr. Savage? We've got a question. Alderman Parker?
Thanks. Dr. Savage, thanks for talking to us this evening. Digital equity, you know, I think is, we've established that it's very important. I think nobody would doubt that. However, we only have the dollars to pay for this for the first year. Is there something in your budget or a plan you have long-term to be sure we don't rip that digital equity away from people's next year?
That is a great question, Alderman Parker, and I'm glad that you asked. I would have two, two points in a response. The first piece is, one could say a year, a year's worth of benefit is a Band-Aid. And to that, I would say, well, it sort of is a Band-Aid. That is, that is the Band-Aid that we need. I'm hoping that this time next year, we are able to have our doors fully open for kids all day, every day. So, in that regard, it is sort of a Band-Aid. But secondly, to answer the other part of your question, we do. We've recently surveyed all of our parents, and actually, about 85% of our families have connectivity on their own. So, that's a really high number and something that is notable for our community. So, we, in using some of the CAREZAC dollars that we've received and some other funding that we are sort of changing how we use, we're procuring more internet hotspots so that we can loan those out to families. In particular, the families that won't be able to benefit from the MediaCom deal, whether it be their geographical location or for some other reason, we are in the process of purchasing hotspots so that we can turn around and issue that as a source of connectivity, either once this expires or if they're not able to benefit. And we will continue to find solutions. We've got some mobile wireless hubs that we are purchasing for around some of our neighborhoods. While I would love community-wide infrastructure, we know the cost associated with that, and also, how do we protect our kids when they're on these, these neighborhood, you know, just public access Wi-Fi? So, along with the hotspots, we're also, as I mentioned, investing in these wireless bundles to put in, in different pockets near our schools, but we're always looking for solutions. And this is sort of a big Band-Aid, if you will, to help us get to that next step. But great question.
Anyone else? Well, thank you so much, Dr. Savage, for giving us some of your time this evening, and keep up the good work and, and keep up the good fight. Thank you.
We can.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is executive session.
Would someone like to make that motion?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, 5 LCS 120/2C11, and appointment to employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 LCS 120/2C1.
So, everyone that's on the call right now, I would invite you to disconnect, and then you can come back onto the call in just a couple of minutes, and you'll be put in a holding area, and we'll bring you back into the open session when we call it executive session. We expect the executive session to take anywhere between 20 and 30 minutes to give you a heads-up. And so, we'll wait for everyone to clear the online area.
Do we have a second on that one? Sorry. Okay.
You have a second.
Sorry. All right. Roll call, please. Sorry, wait a second, by Moyer.
Second from Alderman Moyer. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Alderman Berg?
Aye. Aye. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you, Sonia.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you. Open session, and we're going to relaunch with questions on the, are there any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we're going to go into the committee of the whole agenda items. The first item is amendment to Chapter 19 of the Moline Code of Ordinances, manufactured homes. Dirk Price will be presenting.
Yes, thank you. Before you is a new Chapter 19 concerning mobile homes, mobile home parks, and the homes in those parks. Marty asked me to summarize this in three sentences this morning, and the answer was, this has been on council's radar since 2018. There was a direction from council in 2018 to come back with a revised Chapter 19. That was reiterated a couple of times, and we're pleased to present a Chapter 19. I tried to do attract changes, and it was such a mess that I just gave you the new one. What it does is two things. It amends the code concerning the park themselves. It updates the building standards to comply with our building standards for streets, for the utilities. We left the setbacks and the things that exist now in terms of the land use in that respect, but we updated all of the engineering standards, essentially. We, with respect to the homes themselves, we've now required the federal standard, so nothing pre-1975 gets to be placed new or replaced. It's like a non-conforming use, so 50% of it's gone. It's going to be replaced by a new home. As I explained in the explanation, part of what's driving this, in addition to our ongoing work with YES and Cloverleaf and, and bringing along some property enforcement issues there, is that it's very likely we're going to have to be involved in providing some kind of service to the folks at AirView because of their failing septic system. And to the extent that they want to look at annexing or getting other services to avoid the out-of-district rates that will be a burden on them, we wanted to have the standards in place so they understand what they're getting into, because they're, people are going to have to be replacing roads, they have to be replacing utilities, and we want them to have the standards. So, those are the essential things, the, the big, the big revisions were in, really, as I said, the, the standards of engineering for both the homes themselves and the parks. So, if there are questions, I'm happy to take them. But we, we surveyed sort of the best practices of the regulations of these things, and, and that's what we brought forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dirk? Alderman Went?
Thank you, Dirk. I appreciate you guys getting to this and, and putting it together. I know that it was a long time coming and a lot of work on it, so thank you. And I appreciate you getting me a copy over, and I apologize, I got back into town late last night, and so I wasn't able to review it over the weekend. But as I've started to review it and haven't gotten all the way through it, I, I support kind of the, the changes that we've made. My concern is, our old one had some, like, limitations of, of things, like, when they came into our, within the municipality, they had a certain amount of time to bring everything up to spec, or they would be found in non-compliance and, and those sorts of things. So, with, with this one, the way that it's written out, is it immediate enforcement? So, for instance, if we brought the AirView into it, like, on day one, they would have to meet all of our codes and regulations, and our current, like Cloverleaf, as soon as this is passed, they have to meet all of these regulations on day one.
So, it's, it's a good question. The answer is, though, in all things regulatory, there is an amortization process where people are given a reasonable amount of time to come into compliance. So, does that mean that tomorrow, if, if this is passed in three meetings from now, YES doesn't have to go dig up its road, put down a proper road that meets the current new standard? It does mean when they do replace their road, they have to build it to the current new standard. So, that's how it will work, is that as the capital life for them and a reasonable enforcement mechanism, they've got to replace with the new standards. When it comes to AirView, that's a little more complicated, but one of the ideas that we were kicking around, because there was a possibility that it was going to be sold and the new owner wanted to bring it in, annex in. In the annexation agreement, we can control the terms that you're talking about, because it's an annexation agreement. We can do just about anything there. One idea that the mayor had, which I'm attracted to, was that they're going to get out of district rates, even if they're annexed in, until they come into compliance, so that they're paying an excessive, a, a higher rate. We're giving them an actual financial incentive to spend the money to fix their roads, fix their infrastructure, fix their utilities, bring it to standard, so that they can get in city rates for the water and the sewer services that they're going to have to get from us. So, there was a way to financially incentivize that. But when it comes to AirView, the amount of runway they would get to come into compliance is something we would have to negotiate with them, because frankly, they just aren't going to be able to pull it off overnight. And that's how we would, we would incentivize it, we would watch it, deal with it that way, and then, you know, like we did, threatened with YES, if we have to take them to court, we will. Now, we have more stuff to help take them to court, and if we don't think they're moving fast enough, even under the amortization rules, we can do that. So, the answer's no, there's no overnight requirement. What happens overnight is, the next time you touch a capital asset in a substantial way, you now have to bring it into compliance.
Any, Alderman Went?
Yeah, one follow-up with that. Do we, into any issues? Because I know our, our current version that we have in there, there are a number of things that I, I don't think that we were enforcing, or it did have some amortization built into it, that if we pass this new one, are we going to lose some enforcement that we could maybe possibly be enforcing on them right now? My concern in, in, in some of these areas is, you know, these residents that are, are living in some of these conditions are not ideal. And I, I think oftentimes, the burden of the landlord or the trailer park is, it's their duty to make sure that these things are, are up to code, the, the roads, the facilities, and, and those sorts of things. And I know, having conversations two years ago with staff, there were a number of things that just did not meet our code at all, even our, the, the current code that we've got right now. I just don't want to lose a situation where we up, update this right now, and then they say, oh, well, yeah, but now we, we get, the, the clock starts over for our amortization because we're now under a new code. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, but we're not going to lose that momentum, because the critical things, for Cloverleaf, for example, flooding and how they handle their, their wastewater, the sewer treatment, so it's the stormwater and wastewater, are two critical issues with them. Those are under separate sections of the code that all we're doing is reinforcing those in our new mobile home section, but they're already applicable. So, we're not going to lose that momentum. When it comes to how good they build their internal roadway network, you know, when they touch it, getting it on the books now is only going to help us. I don't think that they have in plans to do anything big that way. So, we're not going to lose any momentum there. I think we're going to be fine on the big two, the flooding issue and the, how they handle their wastewater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing us, from us this evening? Dirk, are you looking for?
I was just moving forward, and to the extent that anybody see, I know it's a lot to digest, and to the, we have a couple readings, so it's an opportunity. If you see things, let me know, and we'll work on improving it if you see it in the next two readings.
Thank you, Dirk. The next item is Southview First Edition Final Plat, Chris Mathias.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is a two-lot subdivision, as you mentioned, for the Southview First Edition. This accompanies the rezoning that the council approved probably about a month back, which rezoned a portion of this office district to B3. So, that would be on Lot 2 of this particular subdivision that you have in front of you. Excuse me. You'll see Lot 1 is the new commercial portion that was taken off of there, and Lot 2 is kind of the existing old John Deere Healthcare Edition. So, the, the Plan Commission approved this preliminary plat. They had two things that they wanted us to look at before it came on for our final plat, and that was stormwater and sidewalks. You'll see that there's a private stormwater management easement over the southern portion of this property. That allows Lot 2 not only to drain onto the property, but to handle stormwater maintenance as they need to. The other thing, we wanted to make sure it was noted as private, not a city-maintained storm system, but it does give us the opportunity to get in there if, for some reason, no maintenance was done, and, you know, there was some kind of bankruptcy situation or something like that. So, that satisfies all our stormwater concerns in the Plan Commissions. Second thing, Plan Commission wanted us to look at was sidewalks. John Deere Road and 41st Street effectively can't have a sidewalk along them per IDOT. You know, they've been reconstructed by IDOT at this point, and our engineering have taken a look at 38th Avenue and really see some difficulties, and I think there's some difficulties to put in the sidewalk there. Number one, it doesn't have anything to connect to at 41st Street, and it doesn't have anything to connect to as you go down this corridor. So, we've, I, I believe what you'll see coming here, instead of the applicant wanting to install that sidewalk, I believe you'll see a sidewalk variance coming, where they're going to request, and in lieu of payment to the sidewalk fund for that portion along 38th Avenue. And in talking with our engineering staff, we're, we, we probably will be recommending approval of that if we get that application. So, we've looked at sidewalks here, and like I said, I think the only place to install one would be 38th, but even there is probably difficult. So, you'll see a variance request, I would imagine, coming through, unless the developer just decides they want to install it there. Recommendation from staff on this is to approve the subdivision.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Went?
Quick question. Is this, I guess, on the west side along 41st, is this a open pit, storm water retention and, and drainage, or is it actually stormwater that is covered conduit down to the south?
You know, Mike, I haven't been out there to see it and how it's installed, so I'd have to get back to you on that one. I'm not sure what the specific facilities are.
And, and I'm not even sure if it's at this stage. I mean, we just have a lot of locations in Moline where we wind up with these kind of just open pits, and then wind up trees and bushes, and then a lot of trash and garbage winds up collecting in them. And I, I'm just concerned that we're not addressing those sorts of issues as we develop each, each one of these spots. And I'm not exactly sure, when is the appropriate time during this process to, to work on those issues? But I, I just don't want a situation where we wind up, kind of like what we've got by South Park Mall, you're coming down 41st, and you wind up with just this open, somewhat standing water sometime, bunch of bushes, bunch of volunteer tree growing, and then garbage that people have thrown out off the side of the road that we have to volunteer, get volunteers to go and clean up every other weekend, because it starts to clog up that area.
Yeah, that's understandable. I think perhaps what you're talking, perhaps, it sounds like what you're talking about is more the maintenance of the site as you go forward, right? I mean, some of that, it sounds like it might be simple property maintenance issues, but if you have some specific questions on the type of, on the type of facility that's getting installed there, I can certainly, I know, I know Kurt Hire has looked at it on our staff, and I can get, you know, an engineer to send over some real specifics on that.
Well, I, I just see, you know, I, I drive through Moline, and I know we're unique because we've got so many valleys and, and watersheds and, and those sorts of things, which is terrific, and that makes Moline very unique. But once we get to our commercial sections, we then wind up with, like I said, these, these open pits that it looks like in other communities, they wind up being, putting culverts, having grass that it looks like in other communities, they wind up being putting culverts, having grass over top. And they're much more visually appealing. I remember having a conversation with Ray Forsythe. I guess this is timely since Five Guys just announced that they're coming in over in Davenport, that he said at one point they were considering down by South Park Mall on the 16th Street corridor. But their site guy showed up, looked at that open pit there and was like, you know, this isn't the kind of location we want to be at because there was just volunteer trees and silt and all sorts of stuff in it. And so long term, if we want to develop our commercial areas and attract more and more, having these open pit watersheds, I think in our commercial districts, we need to figure out a way to address those. And again, I don't know if we're just perpetuating the same thing, if this is the time to address it or how those things can be taken care of moving forward.
What I certainly want to do is mention it to Mr. Wade, Ryan Wade, he's the developer. So he's, you know, he wants to make this a nice looking development. He's also now, I think, considering that this will be a three tenant. You know, so he's got two more tenants to attract there. So I think, I think that's a big deal to him and I'll, I'll mention your concerns to him that maybe we can make this more of a, you know, where this is located, try and make it more of a gateway function as well as, you know, containing stormwater, you know, try and make it a little welcoming there considering it's on the corner.
Are there any other comments or questions? Alderman Went?
Would it make sense to make this, because what I, I just want to make sure that I understand the approval. If we approve this at community as a whole, is it done? Or should we approve it contingent upon having a resolution to that? I just don't want a situation where we approve it right now and the conversation is, well, we'll talk with them and then they say, ah, no, we don't want to do it and then it's already done anyway. So the conversation ends.
Does this come back for a second approval, Chris?
No, the, well, you have another week, I believe, you know, obviously you have another week, another reading of it. But no, this is the city council, this is the final plat and you're the final, you're the only decision maker on that.
But we get a second reading and we do a final vote, right?
Correct.
So would that give you time to address this concern with the developer and come back to us on whether or not that's going to be?
Yes, we can, we can find out the specifics on what he plans to do in that area so you can make an informed decision.
You comfortable with that, Alderman Went?
Yeah, if, I'm going to support it, but can we put it on the non-consent for next week so that we make sure that we address that?
Certainly.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Alderman Berg, you may be on mute.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoolmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Chris. The next item is the 2020 Justice Assistance Grant Memorandum of Understanding and Application, Chief Gov.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Council. Before you, I have the 2020 Justice Assistance Grant. For those of you that have been on council for a while, you've seen this annually for over the past 10 years. So seeking to approve, seeking approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Moline and the County of Rock Island in regard to a joint application for funding available from United States Department of Justice. To submit this grant, we were scheduled to receive $14,603, which is allocated by the JAG formula. It's a complicated formula based on UCR data and jurisdictions must be in compliance and meeting reporting requirements. In fact, this year, Moline is the only recipient of the grant in our area. Rock Island County will receive 10% of that as a disparate impact jurisdiction. So our sum will be $13,142.70. We are limited and there are prohibitions on what we can spend this money on. So we have to use it for law enforcement, technology improvements and crime prevention programs. And for the past several years, we've used this to replace our less lethal technology in our police department. So staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? I don't hear anybody seeing any discussions, so roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams? I'm sorry, Alderman Williams?
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoolmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Chief. We do not have another this evening, so we're going to move into the informationals. We have our administrators update, Marty Lomax.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I think you have to come out to the, oh, no, you do have microphone. You're okay, if you have microphone, don't hesitate. Okay.
Just a couple of things. First of all, at the beginning of this month, we implemented a realignment of duties and moving the utilities billing department from public works to finance. Now, there wasn't a physical move. It was the, in fact, the only change physically was a finance person will probably be down at the water department working with the utility billing department. But this provides better coordination of customer service and other activities. We made this effective August 1st. And I want to thank Carol Barnes and Tony Lodi, they've been working hard to make this work and make the transition a smooth one. And there will be other challenges as we move ahead, but they are committed to making this work. So that's one thing. Number two, the, much of my time this past month has been spent trying to understand some of the budget conditions that COVID-19 has placed on the city of Moline. I think it's safe to say it's not been a normal year in terms of budgets and operations. And part of this understanding is how we can make those adjustments. So as you know, we've engaged Gov HR to assist us in analyzing and reviewing several of the departments and functions for potential department realignment, restructuring, and including potential use of outside contractors for services. I just wanted to reiterate to the council that we are far from making any kind of concrete recommendations. And any recommendations that we do make will come with a lot of careful thought and analysis and input from you as well. I know there's been a lot of concern about it and I just want to make sure that it's not just about cost, but it's about internal efficiencies, operations and direct services to the residents. So I've heard from some of you, I've heard from some contractors that work with the city, I've heard from several residents as well as the mayor and others. And so I appreciate all your input and knowledge that you've given me. I am the new guy, so I'm still learning. But I just want to, again, reiterate, we're doing research, we're doing background work and we're going to be very, very careful about what we do there. So last thing I want to mention is that the council asked for some more research and recommendations on pigeons several weeks ago. And so we are still working on that, doing some more research. We'll be back to the city council, want to give an update and make sure that you know that we have not forgotten about pigeons. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to.
Does anyone have any questions, Marty, before Alderman Went?
Do we have a timeframe or guess about when you might come back with the pigeons?
Probably next week or the week after. I mean, we're pretty close. I checked with, we're working on, yeah. We'll be flying in with those next week.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on to, I believe it Carol Barnes, this will lead on this part, the COVID-19 update. How are things looking, Carol?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to give you a brief update on our revenue. We've got several in here that came in by the end of July 31st. And Don, if you can put up the spreadsheet and actually go to the second page. I would like to start on the second page and then I move back. If we look at the bottom line on our top 18 revenue sources through July, those top 18 revenues are down about 4.42% from our budget for about $1.7 million year to date. And as we look at that, we may say, well, gee, we're in a lot better position than we thought. And we are thankful that we're holding our own. But I do want to remind the council that of those seven months, three of them were basically normal from January, February and March. And then we had our next four months that were strictly COVID related. So as we continue on through the end of the year, you know, we're going to, we're going to continue to watch this. I don't think we're ready to think we're going to move the budget numbers on these yet. But I would like to give you the highlight of just a couple of these new revenues that came in. So Don, if you can go back to the first page. And I'm going to look at kind of the yellow highlights under the July column. And the first one is property taxes. We got about $556,000 of new property taxes that came in in July. This is actually a little higher than we normally get year to date. If you look over in the far yellow column, we're actually up almost 10% of what we normally get. And we are just very thankful that the property tax revenue continues to come in strong. Most of our property taxes are escrowed through mortgages. And so anyways, we're just very thankful that the property tax numbers are strong. If we look down, more than halfway down the page, you'll see our food and liquor tax came in here as of July 31st. And it has picked up since the last month. But typically July and August are the city's highest month. It's when people are out and about, shopping more, maybe a little bit of tourism. But it is a little bit higher than what we saw back in May and June and it came in at $162,000. For the year, however, we are short 18%. That's in the yellow column, the solid column going down the page. We are down 18% year to date on food and liquor taxes. The next one is our motor fuel tax, just to take a look at the one cent per gallon fund that is our own. And it did pick up from the last couple of months. It's increased, again, these are kind of small dollars, but percentage wise, we're still down about 35%. So again, some of the revenues are in good shape, but some of them are still trailing. And then, Don, if you go to the next page, our hotel motel tax. There we go, our hotel motel tax is actually down year to date 53%. But we are thankful, it has also come back over the last two months. If you look at May and June, we were at $36,000 and $49,000. For the month of July, it came in at $58,000, so it is up a little bit. We're kind of shooting for that 50% mark, I think, for the remainder of this 12 months. And then the last category, just to briefly highlight, is our utility funds down below. It's actually our last three highlights on the page for water, sewer and sanitation. I had worked with Tony and we had originally estimated that we thought for the year nationwide, it was estimates on a national basis. They said kind of plan at about a seven and a half percent decrease in utilities. And thankfully, our water, it is down, but it's only down about four and a half percent. And this is based on usage that's actually been billed out. Our sewer is about six and a half percent down. And then our sanitation fund is pretty much holding its own. So again, if you take a look at year to date through July, we are down about 4.4% overall on these 18 revenue sources. Any questions on this sheet?
Carol, I have a question about the real estate tax. I don't understand how we can be collecting more since we have a levy. Is that people's paying their taxes early? How does that happen?
Yes, yes, and I think the real estate taxes go out, through escrow, that would come through very evenly on a monthly basis. But however, sorry, now I'm losing my train of thought. But if people get just an individual bill that's not escrowed taxes, they can pay 100% of their taxes as soon as they get their bill. And I know elderly people historically in the past, when they get a bill, they absolutely want to get it paid up right away.
For some reason, that's offensive, Alderman Waldron, I don't know why.
I paid it the next day.
Maybe he just can't wait to get rid of that money. Alderman Went, did you have something to say?
Well, basically, while we're $600,000 ahead in that, that's going to come back to zero ahead. I mean, it's going to zero itself out. So we need to make sure that we're taking that into consideration because that's an extra $600,000 that we're like, hey, we're ahead by this much. But when all said and done, that $600,000 is, being ahead is going to go away. So when you're taking, you know, if you're looking at this and looking down at the bottom line, we've been spotted $600,000, that's going to go away by the end of the year.
I would like to encourage everyone to pay their taxes early though, because then we've got the money in here. So that's great for us, thank you. Carol, I don't think there are any other questions on this part. Will you go ahead?
Okay, and then just very briefly, two additional things. We did send out to all the departments a copy of their budget so they can review the COVID budgets as you have seen them and we've talked about over the last few months. And they are doing one final look through for potential updates or any additional cuts they might be able to provide. And then I'm working with HR to make sure that all of our hiring freezes with frozen positions are being updated properly with all the payouts from a budget standpoint. And just to give you a heads up, we have 31 current positions that are open due to a hiring freeze. We're also going to take a look at all the chargebacks, make sure all of our debt services updated with all the positive refinancing that we've done this year. And then we're also going to take another hard look back on all the revenues across all funds, not just the 18 that we report back to you on a regular basis, but all the revenues across all funds. And our intention is, is to get this kind of wrapped up so we can present a review for you that first week in September. And then following our review later in the month, we'll come back for final adoption of those amendments. And then lastly, at our last meeting, I gave a presentation on our year to date June financials on a cash basis. And I was asked to complete a three-year history of year to date comparables through June on a cash basis. I do have that done and I will be sending that out to you here this week.
Thank you, Carol.
And with that, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? I don't see any questions. Thank you so much, Carol, for walking us through that. I appreciate the update.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
I'd now like to open it up for public comment. We do not have any public comment this evening. Is there any further business for the committee of the whole?
Mayor, we do have Anthony Moselli remote that was going to talk about the bond sale.
Oh, okay, Anthony? Would you like to address the bond sale for us?
Oh.
We got you.
There we go. I thought I was on mute.
You were, yes, you were, you were right.
So good evening, just to give everybody an update. We took bids yesterday on the city's 2020B refunding bonds. This was a refinancing of your general obligation refunding bond series 2012F. Because of the short term and relatively small size of this refunding, only being a four-year issue, we did things a little bit differently this time and went for a direct private placement route where we sold the bonds as a hold to one investor, generally a bank. Doing it that way reduces costs and it's also a quicker issue. You don't have to go through a rating agency process or put together an official statement. I'm happy to report, we received really good interest. We received a total of four bids. The winning bidder was Blackhawk Bank and Trust, so a local bank, at a really incredible rate. The blended rate was a 0.4681%, resulting in overall savings of over $200,000 to the city over those four years. So about $50,000 a year in total savings. On a present value basis, that was just under $200,000, just about $197,000 or 8.8% PV savings. So really incredible result. The rest of the bids came between 1.18% and 1.34%. So really good rate from Blackhawk. That, the great rate that they provided ended up saving the city a total of $50,000 more. ended up saving the city a total of $50,000 more than we had anticipated for this refunding.
That's great news. Thank you so much for facilitating that. Are you ready for questions? I think we've got a question from the council. Are you ready? Alderman Went?
How much savings was there with, the, the winning bid versus the second best? What was the, that difference?
About $50,000.
Okay, so the, so the second was, was kind of close to your, your estimation and...
Very much, yes.
Is, is there anything else, any other debt that we've got that we could go down this route, even if it was like splitting it between a couple of the other bidders that we would have some, some savings on going through this private placement?
So, you know, we've done, this is our second refinancing of the year. And the, you know, the ability to do these refinancings is dependent on when your old bonds are callable. In this case, these 2012F bonds were callable this November, so the first opportunity to refund those bonds was November. And you can do that as early as 90 days before that first call. So what we're going to do now is continue to look at the city's outstanding debt for opportunities. And as we get closer to those next call dates, that's when we start to move through this process again. And whether that be a public sale, like we did the first time around this year with 2028 bonds, or it's a private placement with, as we did this time, that really depends on the structure of the bonds. Private placements are usually effective when it's a, when it's a shorter issue, generally. With, with getting bank bids, banks typically like shorter issuances, so will bid on them more. And, and that certainly showed here with, with this four-year issue and this aggressive bid from, from Blackhawk. With a longer-term issue, if that were to be the case, you know, a lot of times, a public sale would be, would prove to produce greater savings to the city. So it's a, it's a case-by-case basis, based on the issue.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I don't see any other questions. Thank you so much for helping us. We appreciate it. Thank you, Carol, for your work on it as well.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeanine.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So we don't have any other public comment this evening. Is there any other business for Committee of the Whole? Hearing none. We're going to close out the Committee of the Whole and go into the council agenda. We will not be having an invocation this evening, but we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Resolute, love and respect.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Scoobmaker?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole and Council meeting minutes of July 21st, 2020. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3020-2020, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable general obligation refunding bond series 2020B of the Moline Code, I'm sorry, of the City of Moline, Illinois, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement disclosure with Robert W. Baird and Company for underwriting services related to the refinancing of the 2020B bonds. Resolutions. Council Bill 1084-2020, a resolution amending the City of Moline Community Development Block Grant Policies and Procedures Manual by adding Appendix K COVID-19 Small Business Loan Program, adding language to the CDBG Down Payment Closing Cost Assistance Program, and updating the racial ethnicity categories and various program applications. Council Bill 1085-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an agreement for professional services with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for professional engineering services required to study biosalads, de-watering practices, and equipment for the North Slope wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $49,995.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Scoobmaker? Alderman Scoobmaker?
You're, you're off mute now.
Aye.
Thank you.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1086-2020, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a compensation plan for specific employees.
Motion to table 1086-2020?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, and a second by Alderman Moyer.
Excuse me, Your Honor?
Yes.
I meant to table it for one meeting. I'm sorry. I wasn't specific.
Thank you for clarifying. Alderman Moyer, second stance.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Scoobmaker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
First reading ordinances. Council Bill 3021-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 6 Yield Intersections by repealing 21st Avenue's preference over 14th Street. Council Bill 3022-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 7 thereof, one-way streets by including an alley east of 16th Street between 8th Avenue and 9th Avenue, traveling northbound. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jeanine.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move into miscellaneous business, and I'm just going to work my way around the council chambers. Alderman Williams, do you have anything for us this evening?
I can see you, but I can't hear you. Alderman Williams?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Went?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Potter?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Scoobmaker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Berg?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Waldron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, wow. We're getting quick now. I'd like to open it up for staff. Does staff have anything for the council this evening? And I'd like to now open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
We have a motion to adjourn. Alderman Waldron, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Alderman Potter. Is there any further business for the council meeting this evening? We are adjourned.